I call this public hearing on Act 129 and House Bill 505 to order. Pennsylvania House Bill 505 is a significant piece of legislation for energy efficiency in the state. It aims to update and expand Act 129, Pennsylvania's existing energy efficiency law by incorporating energy resilience goals, providing more flexibility to utilities in program implementation and updating cost-saving and investments metrics. It also places strong emphasis on benefiting low-income households and introducing technologies like solar, battery storage, and heat pumps. Act 129 presents opportunities and challenges for lawmakers, regulators, utilities, and ratepayers. Increased energy efficiency will potentially lead to new jobs, a boost in the local economy, especially retailers who sell energy efficiency products and appliances, and more money in people's pockets, thanks to savings on energy bills. However, there are challenges upfront. Costs of these programs can be expensive for utilities, plus the fear of higher taxes and higher energy bills always looms in the shadows. We are joined today by experts who will help us thread that needle by providing their perspectives on this issue. The Energy Association, representing electric distribution companies; industrial energy consumers of Pennsylvania, representing large industrial energy users; the Public Utility Commissions; Office of Consumer Advocate; and the Energy Efficiency Advocates, represented by KIA. Chairman Metzger, any comments? On their other business, I would like to call up House Resolution 266. Do I hear? Tim, would you explain it?
Absolutely. This resolution designates July 16, 2025, as Water Utility Worker Appreciation Day in Pennsylvania.
Chairman, do I hear any negative votes?
No.
Hearing no negative votes, the bill passes unanimous. Ms. Brooks, do the roll call.
Here.
Representative Benham.
Yeah.
Representative Borowski.
Yeah.
Representative Cephus.
Vote by designation?
Representative Gallagher.
Vote by designation?
Here.
Representative Haddock.
Designation?
Representative Hoenstein.
Here.
Representative Isaacson.
Designation?
Representative Malagari.
Here.
Representative Mullins.
Designation?
Representative Monroe.
Designation?
Representative Nelson.
Designation?
Representative Pielee.
Here.
Representative Steele.
Designation?
Chairman Metzger.
Here.
Representative Hogan.
Designation?
Representative Cale.
Designation?
Oh, sorry. He's here.
Representative Kaufman.
Designation?
Representative Kutz. Representative Major.
Designation?
Representative Mahaffey.
Here.
Representative Mahalik.
Designation?
Representative Rin Kavich.
Designation?
Representative Tomlinson.
Designation?
Representative Warner.
Designation?
Representative Williams.
Co-members present, we will begin the public hearing. As a reminder to the members, please hold all questions until all testifiers have spoken, and we will begin with Mr. Rod Williamson of Industrial Energy Consumers of Pennsylvania.
Good morning, Chairman Burgos, Chairman Metzger, and members of the committee. My name is Rod Williamson. I'm the Executive Director of the Industrial Energy Consumers of Pennsylvania, or AECA. It's a trade association formed in 1982 by large, energy-intensive companies operating locations across Pennsylvania, providing thousands of family-sustaining jobs. I sincerely appreciate you accommodating my travel schedule and allowing me to testify virtually this morning. So you should have a copy of my written testimony and AECA's recommended amendments to House Bill 505. So I will quickly touch on the five key items discussed in that testimony. Number one, resilience to extreme weather events. Exploring and implementing cost-effective measures is likely a worthwhile effort. However, the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Program is not the appropriate program to address this issue. As proposed, these broad, vague measures increase resilience to extreme weather events, along with the measurement and verification of the benefits, are far too different to be included in the EEC program. That EEC program is about a reduction in usage, whereas some of these measures around resiliency to extreme weather are actually targeted toward keeping a customer's ability to continue to consume electricity. So from the AECA standpoint, this is trying to blend two very different programs together, but it should be explored independently. Number two, the already significant cost of the EEC program should not be increased further by providing a financial incentive to the electric distribution companies. While there are benefits to energy efficiency and conservation, we have to remember, it's not free. Since 2009, Pennsylvania utility customers have paid over $3 billion into Act 129 compliance programs through energy efficiency and conservation surcharges. The EDCs earn a profit through a return on capital investment, but they are not investing their capital in the EEC program. This program is financed by ratepayers, and therefore, the EDCs should not earn a profit. Industrial customers have seen the consequences of such a policy approach in Michigan, where Michigan ratepayers are bearing the cost of both the energy efficiency projects and millions of dollars a year in performance incentives awarded to utilities. This is certainly a driver in why Michigan's electricity rates are increasing faster than most other states. Pennsylvania would be wise to avoid adopting a similarly flawed EEC model. Number three, the available EEC program grants for customers should not be reduced by provided funding for the program for EDC distribution system improvements. Electric distribution companies already benefit from the Distribution System Improvement Charge, the DSIC programs, and should be actively reducing system losses through their capital improvements and operational and maintenance efforts. They do not need another funding source that is outside of a contested regulatory case. Number four, as proposed, House Bill 505 would expand the cap on the EEC total program cost, and the program cost increase could be over 20% beginning in 2031. The bill allowing, the bill language allowing for an arbitrary 20% increase to the total cost should be eliminated. The bill has other provisions that put some boundaries around that increase, but then there's this arbitrary adder of an additional 20%. AECA's position, that should not be included. And last but not least, House Bill 505 misses an opportunity to correct a longstanding inequity, the lack of an option for efficient industrial customers. It is important to remember that industrial energy efficiency is an investment at a specific customer's facility that results accrue directly to the specific customer's operations. Demanding a highly efficient manufacturer to subsidize improvement at competing facilities is a policy that penalizes a company's longstanding leadership and investment in efficiency. Some manufacturers have led the charge in adopting energy efficiency strategies, investing in upgrades well before Act 129 was enacted, and without any support from utility-run programs. These manufacturers have invested substantially improving efficiency with their own operations should not continue to bear the full cost of a program from which they derive limited or no direct benefit, given their first mover status. Offering a reduced nonparticipation fee would reflect a more equitable and performance-based approach to contribution. This is not a complete opt-out, or even a self-directed plan, which AECA has discussed in the past. Our recommended amendment would still require all industrial customers to contribute to the EEC program, but provide a simple, reduced fee structure for an industrial customer that can no longer benefit from the EEC program grants. In summary, while AECA members certainly support energy efficiency and conservation members, we oppose House Bill 505 and respectfully encourage the committee to revisit several provisions to ensure that the legislation supports a fair and balanced approach to energy efficiency policy. We believe thoughtful amendments, such as keeping the program focused on energy efficiency and conservation, establishing a reduced fee for non-participating industrial customers, avoiding additional costs to customers through utility performance incentives, and limiting any increase in the total cost of the program can help strengthen this legislation, ensure it reflects the shared goals of efficiency, fairness, and economic competitiveness. I thank you for the opportunity to testify here this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next, we have Mr. Andy Tubbs of EAP. Mr. Tubbs?
Good morning, Chairman Burgos, Chair, and members of the House Committee. My name is Andy Tubbs, and I am President, Chief Executive Officer, Energy Association of Pennsylvania, Oregon. We are the statewide trade association, representing Pennsylvania's electric and natural gas distribution utilities. As outlined in our submitted written testimony, our four largest EDC members are subject to the energy efficiency and conservation requirements established under Act 129 in 2008. And since that time, EAP has played an integral role in implementing the EEC programs established by the Commission, not only by facilitating discussions and sharing best practices, but also working across stakeholder meetings and working with the Commission to ensure payment under contracts between the PUC and their statewide evaluator. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to provide written testimony, as well as oral testimony today on House Bill 505, which proposes meaningful reforms to Act 129. EAP and its members recognize the benefits of programs aimed at empowering customers to manage their energy usage. And however, the energy efficiency marketplace has changed since 2008, and the opportunity for more comprehensive measures and cooperation among a variety of energy efficiency offerings is not supported by the current statute. We believe that the time is right to modernize Act 129, and we appreciate that House Bill 505 takes important steps. I really like to note that the work at the Governor's Office and working with the Energy Association, its members, as well as other stakeholders, in preparing a number of amendments that are in 505. I'd like to highlight a few that we think we strongly support. Penalty reform. House Bill 505 would replace the current mandatory penalty structure, which ranges from $1 million to $20 million and applies regardless of best efforts, with the Commission's general authority under Title 66 to render civil penalties. This allows for discretion, it considers good-faith efforts, and it will encourage thoughtful program design without the threat of disproportionate penalties. And what I mean there is, I think if we don't have the cloud of a $20 million penalty, I think that the EDCs and other stakeholders can come up with new ideas to meet customers where they were at, where they're trying to reduce usage in their homes and their businesses. And by doing so, without the threat of a $20 million penalty, you can have some opportunities for trial and error, without the error costing millions of dollars, which is just disproportionate for the work that's being done. The bill also provides full and timely cost recovery and permanent loss revenue recovery outside of a rate case, and authorizes performance incentives. These changes, we believe, would benefit programs and encourage utilities, again, to be more innovative with stakeholder input, and it would be driven by results. So the incentives would not be just paid out to EDCs, it would be tied to performance and actually driving greater savings than the targets that have been set. One of the big changes that we strongly support is the removal of the 15-year limit on savings from individual measures, which currently discourages investment in long-lasting, impactful technologies. House Bill 505 rightly allows for savings from front-of-the-meter, as well as off-plan utility initiatives to count towards savings goals. While we support these provisions, we respectfully offer several suggestions, which are outlined more thoroughly in my written testimony. I'll touch on a few of them here. The one item we'd like to talk about is that, in Pennsylvania, it's unique that each EDC is given a very specific savings target to hit, and it's just one number. What the EAP and its members have been advocating for is to create a range of savings. So there's, again, a little bit of leeway, so that utility can work between that range and not be driven to hit just one specific target. And I think this will allow for, again, more innovative work with stakeholders and the companies to drive savings, but also avoid EDCs being left holding a bag or being left to try to hit a target for things beyond their control, for economic shifts, extreme weather, but we're still being held for accounting for real savings in the programs. Another item is the demand-response component of Act 129. It currently includes language in 505 that would lead to mandatory daily peak programs. In our experiences over the 17 years of operating with these programs, these have proven costly, complex, and difficult to evaluate. We believe that you should have more permissive language, and I did note in the Chairman DeFranks' testimony, he talks about time-of-use rates and other demand response. We support that, and I think allowing utilities to bring those forward makes sense. But I think demand response, much like resiliency, like Ms. Williamson just said, really merit a separate conversation outside of Act 129, which, again, is focused on reducing electricity consumption. We should avoid trying to conflate too many good things into one bill, and I think the Commission has the requisite authority now to look at demand-response programs outside of Act 129. I think that'd be a more meaningful use of our time. I think what happens in these programs is they overlap. When you have a phase, which is a five-year period, it overlaps with another phase. So right now, the companies are still working through Phase Four, but are well down the path for implementing Phase Five. It really makes it difficult for evaluation of some of the programs, specifically demand-response. And we think it's one of those areas where it would just benefit by being pulled out of Act 129 and done separately. I won't hit on resiliency, because I think Mr. Williamson did a fine job of covering that, but we agree that resiliency should be pulled out of Act 129. Only thing I would add is that the EDCs already have clear and well-regulated responsibility under the Pennsylvania Public Utility Code to ensure reliable and resiliency. These are capital planning rate cases, the long-term infrastructure improvement plans, and the reliability of each utility is heavily monitored by the Bureau of Technical and Utility Services at the Commission. The one item in House Bill 505 makes a change to some language, and it replaces the word "electric consumption" with a broader term for "energy." The intent of Act 129 was to reduce electricity consumption and demand through programs administered by EDCs. The proposed shift in language from "electric" to "energy" could confuse program design and introduce unintended obligations beyond electric service. We also believe we should streamline and clarify the calculation of the budget cap. EAP understands the need to update Act 129 EEC budget, which is currently capped at 2% of 2006 overall revenue, but we're concerned that the calculation contained in House Bill 505 is overly complicated and not necessarily incremental. We look forward to working with the Committee to clarify and simplify this calculation, and we believe a place to start this conversation would be considering an incremental increase to the budget by looking at each EDC multiplied by the percentage of increase for distribution rates over the preceding phase of the Act 129 EEC plan. My thought there is, if you have EDCs going in for base rate increases, and they're increasing their distribution rates to consumers, there should be some, by looking at those increases, there's a nexus. If you're getting increased revenues from their distribution charges, there's a nexus with trying to help consumers to reduce their usage to have more savings. We also recommend that we maintain the current, the TRC, the Total Resource Cost Test, which is the test used by the Commission to determine cost-effectiveness. Among other changes, the proposed legislation would determine cost-effectiveness at a measure level, as compared to the current methodology, which looks at cost-effectiveness at the overall planned portfolio. We believe that focusing on a measure level could lead to an elimination of a number of measures that may not meet the TRC, but are nonetheless valuable programs for consumers, particularly low-income consumers, but also new programs and new offerings that at the outset may not pass the TRC, but with investment and opportunity to see how it hits, you really kind of want the opportunity to trial and error, to find out where consumers can make savings and where they're interested in using the programs. This would allow us to do that more effectively. Finally, we believe it's time to improve the Commission's implementation processes. I think Act 129, when it was enacted in 2008, was in a completely different timeframe than we are today. The threat of high bills with high rate impacts, when the rate caps were coming off for electric competition, was the driving reason for this. However, with the Marcellus shale and the natural gas use, our prices never, it never happened, thankfully, because we're blessed with those natural resources here in Pennsylvania. But I think that the, sort of, the context in which the bill was passed sort of lingers over, not only the legislation with the penalties, but also with the Commission processes. I think now, I think we can work with the Commission and other stakeholders to make things, the programs operate a little bit more efficiently. Right now, it could take us months to do some minor changes to our programs, and sometimes you have a program or a measure, and it's just not being, it's not being picked up. You know, consumers are not interested in what you're selling, right? They're not interested in the program. If you want to make a tweak or make, shift dollars from a program that's not being used by consumers to a program that is highly effective and consumers are interested in, it could take us six months with the current process to get those changes made. So we look forward to working with the Commission. We've already had conversations with the Commissioners and Commission staff, and we look forward to those ongoing conversations. And again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to testify. We're happy to answer any questions, but we believe that House Bill 505 has a number of significant changes that will benefit the programs, and we look forward to working with the Committee and other stakeholders as this moves forward.
Thank you, Mr. Tubbs. Next, we'll hear from Commissioner Steve DeFranks from the PUC.
Good morning, Chairman Burgos, Chairman Metzger, and members of the House Consumer Protection Technology and Utilities Committee. I appreciate the opportunity to testify today on an important topic of Act 129. I'm going to summarize my submitted testimony and talk a little bit about how we implement the current Act, how we currently implement the Act, and then touch upon the pending bill. Act 129 was passed to address concerns over increased prices in electric generation due to upcoming expiration of electric rate caps. The goal of Act 129 is to cost-effectively leverage a portfolio of energy efficiency and conservation measures, otherwise known as the EEC plan, offered by EDCs to their customers. These EEC plans are financed by the EDCs using ratepayer dollars capped at a specific figure established in Act 129, and that's 2% of the EDC's 2006 annual revenues. I have listed within my submitted testimony the budget caps for each of the four EDCs to which Act 129 applies. The Act requires the Commission to evaluate each EDC's EEC plan utilizing the Total Resource Cost Test, or the TRC test. The TRC test compares the overall cost of each plan with the overall savings realized from reduced electrical demand. A TRC in excess of 1.0 exhibits that the plan will result in more than $1 in savings for every $1 invested. I note that the TRC for the entire EEC plan must exceed 1.0 for approval by the Commission. Act 129 is largely broken down into two components: energy efficiency and peak demand reduction. Energy efficiency, or EE, refers to using less energy to perform the same function. Upgrading an air conditioning unit that is more energy-efficient is an example of EE. Peak demand reduction, or PDR, refers to strategies or practices aimed at reducing electricity consumption during key periods, usually when demand is high and the grid is unstable, like days today when we have a high heat temperature and everyone has air conditioning on. For each phase, the Commission conducts both residential and non-residential baseline studies to determine the state of electricity usage in the Commonwealth. The next step involves the Commission conducting a market potential study for both EE and PDR. The outcomes of these studies inform the Commission as to what targets or goals are attainable and should therefore be included in any implementation order. If there is achievable cost-effective EE and PDR potential, the Commission will release an implementation order. It is important to note that if the results of our potential studies show there is no cost-effective EE or PDR, the Commission will not propose another Act 129 EEC phase. The Commission recently issued a Phase Five final implementation order, establishing the latest version of Act 129 EEC plans, issued at our June 18, 2025 public meeting. Highlights of our Phase Five implementation order include placing an increased focus on measures that reduce peak demand to help mitigate growing resource adequacy challenges. For instance, PDR requirements are now extended beyond summer only to include the winter months of January and February. Some of our EDCs in the state are winter-peaking, and recent history of weather events has shown the need and benefit for addressing winter-peak demand. Another is inclusion of non-customer site measures. For example, conservation voltage reduction or other front-of-the-meter offerings can provide low-cost, high-yield benefit that can help address growing resource adequacy concerns. And inclusion of information regarding coordination of marketing, contractors, implementation strategies, and incentives from other available agencies of funding programs. The Commission reviews the results by year for each phase of Act 129. To date, we have the results of the first 15 program years. As detailed in my submitted testimony, the portfolio of programs offered by EDCs has proven to be cost-effective, with over $4.9 billion in savings accrued from investments of $2.9 billion. In the current electric industry climate, where there is increased interest in resource adequacy, it is important to consider the benefits of the demand-side management tools like Act 129, what they bring to the electric grid. We all understand that our bulk power grid needs more generation to facilitate increased load demands from the advancement of data centers and electrification projects. However, we should not lose sight of the value that demand-side management tools can bring to help successfully navigate this wave of electrification. To that end, the Commission supports the Committee's deliberation and consideration of updates and reforms to Act 129 statute. The electricity landscape has transformed considerably since Act 129's passage in 2008, and demand-side management programs should be reevaluated to reflect lessons learned, as well as new opportunities available. Areas of interest to the Commission include measures to incentivize demand management from large-load and hyperscale electricity users such as data centers, placing an increased focus on time-of-use rates, extending the limit of useful life measures, and modifying the design to reward utilities for exceeding reduction targets. One of the points I want to point out is the first, the measures to incentivize demand management for large-load users like data centers. One of the issues I always get asked is, are we going to have enough power for data centers? Data centers, because they're such large users, can be used to help manage that grid. Instead of worrying about bringing 60,000 households down or managing the power of 60,000 households, it's easier to manage one unit through a data center. So the same challenges that that data center brings in meeting those resource needs, it also provides an opportunity in helping managing the grid. I thank the Committee for the opportunity to testify today, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we have Mr. Brad Barto of Keystone Energy Efficiency Alliance.
Well, good morning, everyone. First, I would like to thank Chair Burgos, Chair Metzger, and all members of the Committee for the opportunity to provide testimony today on Act 129. KIA is Pennsylvania's trade association for the energy efficiency industry, which includes contractors, manufacturers, engineers, architects, and software developers, and a local workforce that cannot be outsourced. We represent more than 75 member firms that design, manufacture, and implement energy efficiency improvements in buildings across Pennsylvania on behalf of the regulated utilities, the state, and ratepayers. Today, I will briefly touch on a few points regarding the status of Act 129 programming, the benefits of the program, challenges that implementers face, and a brief overview of the legislative and regulatory suggestions we believe could benefit all stakeholders in the Act 129 process. We're currently in the final year of Phase Four of Act 129, and are now in the process of reviewing the final implementation order from the Public Utility Commission that outlines the energy savings targets and program guidelines for Phase Five, which starts in June 2026. Now, as of December 2024, the participating electric distribution Now, as of December 2024, the participating electric distribution companies have achieved around 75% of their energy savings targets for Phase 4, with verified gross savings plus carryover savings from Phase 3 exceeding 3.4 million megawatt hours per year. Now, Program Year 15, which ran from June 2023 to May 2024, yielded 894,000 megawatt hours of gross energy savings, 156 megawatts of peak demand reductions, all from investments from the electric distribution companies exceeding $257 million. Now, overall, Act 129 has turned out significant benefits for an impressively small surcharge to ratepayers. Since program inception, Act 129 has realized over $9 billion in energy benefits, including reduced monthly energy costs, reduction in carbon emissions, increased occupant comfort, and increased property value due to the associated improvements to their homes. Now, by the end of Phase 4 next year, programming will have saved over 20 million megawatt hours, and peak demand reductions have also been significant, with reductions from June 2021 through January 2025 totaling over 430 megawatt hours. Now, these energy savings are significant, but I want to emphasize just how little the surcharge is for Act 129 programming. The surcharge for residential customers is roughly $1.50 per monthly electric bill and around 1.8% of a commercial or industrial ratepayer's monthly electric bill. And the return on investment is also noteworthy, where recent program years have resulted in a $1.44 return for every dollar spent on Act 129 programming. And energy efficiency in Pennsylvania creates jobs. There are over 72,900 Pennsylvanians working in the energy efficiency space, making it the largest segment of energy workers in the state. And that sector is continuing to grow, with an increase in energy efficiency jobs by 4.2% since 2023, making that the nation's 14th fastest-growing energy efficiency workforce. Now, turning to recommendations on implementation and the legislative and regulatory suggestions, I'll be brief, and I do want to note that my written testimony dives much deeper into these points, and I would encourage the members to take a look at our comments for further detail. Now, while we applaud the outcomes of Act 129, we know that it can be improved and have a few suggestions to offer. First, we urge the inclusion of more opportunities for pilot projects in the utilities' plans. The process for pilot projects can be cumbersome, and if not included in the technical resource manual already, projects go through a lengthy review process, and the flexibility for more pilot programming would allow for more innovation and, more innovation and trial of new projects. Second, the restrictive nature of approving a plan for five years exacerbates those challenges to innovative approaches, and we'd like to see a less tightly restricted process for making changes to a plan. Third, and particularly in the industrial sector, projects have a longer ramp-up time period and take longer to execute. We encourage a softer glide down for industrial projects that are underway in one phase but not may, but may not be completed until the next phase. Similarly, as utilities change vendors from phase to phase, there can be a long delay to get a queue of industrial projects ramped up with the implementer change. And lastly, we encourage adopting a model that allows for stakeholder working groups that include utilities, implementers, and industrial professionals. This approach will help us resolve the challenges in the program and allow for more transparency in planning and implementation for phases in the future. So, overall, we suggest having a better process for addressing changing market circumstances, and we think it would be worthwhile. Groups like ours could advocate for implementers if there were an appropriate and allowable mechanism to do so. Now, to the legislative updates. We've worked alongside stakeholders to produce common sense updates to Act 129, and we believe the revisions in House Bill 505 will help accelerate Act 129 from its current status as sort of a legacy program to a more modern, up-to-date program that meets the needs of today. Now, the amendments include, but are not limited to, updating the cost cap from 2006 revenues, increasing incentives for overachieving savings goals while reducing penalties for failures to meet those goals, restructuring the total resource cost test from the 15-year measure as it is right now to the life of an implemented measure, shifting reduction measurements to broader energy rather than just electric savings, allowing for an increase in the low-income threshold for project eligibility, allocating Act 129 funding for preweatherization, pilot and experimental programming, and reduced distribution system loss, and reinstating specific carve-outs for nonprofit and government sector energy reduction requirements. Now, these are just a few of the critical amendments to the act, and this morning I circulated a one-pager to each of your offices that highlights the amendments and the changes this would bring, and I would encourage folks to take a look at that document. In closing, Act 129 programming has proven to significantly benefit ratepayers all across the Commonwealth as reflected in my previous comments. Energy efficiency programming more broadly returns an array of benefits to consumers. While Act 129 returns $1.44 for every dollar invested, energy efficiency standards for appliances have proven to reduce annual household utilities by as much as $107, and heating and cooling costs can be cut down by 15% through basic air sealing and insulating measures. Studies have also found that energy efficiency programming can avoid 6,600 premature deaths annually by reducing harmful emissions. At a larger scale, these programs create a more resilient climate, where the EPA's Energy Star program has avoided nearly 2.7 billion metric tons of emissions since 1992 in both the commercial and industrial spaces. While other energy efficiency programs operate in the Commonwealth, the Act 129 programming is the only one to serve and benefit all ratepayers and all rate classes and should continue to do so. Moreover, as some other federal energy efficiency or assistance programs like the LiHeep, Energy Star, and the Weatherization Assistance Program are squeezed down or altogether eliminated, the protection for low-income households that Act 129 provides will be even more critical now. Given the circumstances and the recent rate hikes from the PJM capacity market auction, now is not the time to step away from the critical energy efficiency programming. Thank you again, Chair Burgos, Chair Metzger, and all other members of the committee for allowing us the space to highlight the critical need for Act 129 programming to continue producing benefits for ratepayers all across the Commonwealth, and I look forward to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Barto. Our final testifier is Dr., is Mr. Darrell Lawrence, state consumer advocate.
Good morning, Chairman Burgos, Chairman Metzger, and members of the House Consumer Protection Technology and Utilities Committee. My name is Darrell Lawrence, and I have the honor of serving as the consumer advocate of Pennsylvania. Thank you for the opportunity to testify about House Bill 505. I would note that the committee has a complete copy of my written testimony, and I will keep my remarks this morning short in order to reserve sufficient time for questions. In my view, HB 505's proposed modifications to the Act 129 statute moves the initiative in a positive direction by allocating funding that is not typically included in energy efficiency, such as funds for health and safety and distributed energy resources. The ability of the PUC to establish an alternative income level for income-eligible households consistent with other current programs to use 200% of the federal poverty level as a guide is also a positive development. There are areas of HB 505, however, that should be considered for refinement. For one, a modest increase to the budget cap should be considered in order to counter effect the effects of inflation. The pursuit of solar and battery systems along with resiliency measures, if included, are laudable goals, although resources directed to these areas will also strain the current budget cap. A carve-out for such activities could be considered. As to the financial incentives for utilities as currently included in the bill, I'm opposed to those sections. I do not believe that introducing a profit motive is necessary or would be in the public interest. So I thank the committee for the opportunity to testify today, and I will gladly take any questions you may have.
Thank you. The first question is Representative Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to direct my first question to Mr. Lawrence with OCA based on something you just said that struck me as rather curious, that you wanted to get rid of the incentive provisions of Act 129 for utilities for meeting their energy efficiency and conservation goals, and I assume leave behind the penalty provisions? So it's all stick and no carrot, is that right?
I think the incentive portion right now, as I understand the bill, is geared toward the utilities exceeding the levels that they're expected to meet.
Which is a common good, is it not?
Not simply meeting the levels, and I think with a slight...
We've heard testimony today from a couple of stakeholders that we're doing extraordinarily well with energy efficiency, saving billions of dollars. If a utility were to exceed the requirements in a particular year, should it not be incentivized to do so because it's such a great common good?
I think the utilities currently have the opportunity to recover every dollar that they spend on these programs.
This is not about cost recovery, this is about doing more common good by saving more energy.
And certainly, Act 129 is, is a laudable goal to accomplish those efforts.
How many millions of dollars in the last 10 years, 15 years since Act 129 came online have the utilities been charged by way of penalties for failing to meet their goals?
I do not have those exact numbers at hand now, but...
Tens of millions?
I do not believe...
Representative Williams, if you'd let the advocate complete his answers to your questions before you ask another one, that would be appreciated.
I do not recall at the moment ever seeing a utility actually fined for failing to meet the requirements of Act 129. It is possible that that's occurred, although I'm certainly not aware of it, although I would say that I have worked at the OCA for the last 20 years, and during that period of time, I've, I've not seen a utility fined for it.
Thank you. Chairman DeFrank, I, and again, would like to ask some questions for the edification of our committee, because one thing that I didn't hear those advocating on behalf of Act 129 saying was something about the resiliency piece of this proposed legislation. And I find it curious because, you know, while Act 129 on the energy efficiency side, minus the penalty provisions, has been a great success since 2009, with my experience in the utility and generation sector, I don't know how a utility is supposed to go into an individual home and assure greater resiliency at the consumer level. Resiliency comes from things like system hardening by way of vegetation management. It comes by way of, I suppose, installing batteries at homes. It comes by way of demand response. These are all systematic changes that come by way of natural rate cases, proposals for capital investment by the utility. I'm not aware of any resiliency program the utility may put in motion today at the consumer level, are you?
I would say, and I think PICO had this in Phase 1 or Phase 2, and that was a conservation voltage reduction program, a CDR. I think you can make an argument that that is, would lead to greater resiliency, at least at the local grid level. And Representative, if I may answer the previous question, I believe we did have one EDC in Phase 1 that was penalized. We can get back to you on what that amount was. I do not know what the dollar amount was, and, and I don't have my Act 129 technical person with me now, so we can get that answer for you. We can get you the amount and when it was, but I believe that it was in Phase 1. So of the entire program, I believe we've only had one utility that not met their goals.
And thank you for that clarification. It's exactly where I was going, which is that to take out the incentive provisions and leave behind the penalty provisions is a bit inequitable, so I appreciate that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Representative Steele?
Thank you, Chair. Really great testimony. I have so many questions, but I'll, I know we're on a timeline here, so, so these are both for the Chair DeFrank. And the first one is the question that I'm asked in my district all the time, how am I going to pay my electric bill? So how, how would this impact consumer bills? One, and then two, at the end of your testimony, you briefly mentioned something about data centers potentially being, you know, we're all kind of seeing data centers as needed but potentially a massive drag on our grid, but you, you started to talk a little bit about how they could possibly be useful to us. Can you expand on that briefly? Thank you.
Okay, so for your first question, and that is in my testimony, what the amount would be for Phase 5, the order we just did a couple of weeks ago, what that would be? The residential, average residential bill would be $1.37 per month on Act 129 charge. And again, this is based on usage, so it would be different for every ratepayer, but that's based on a monthly bill of $168.83. The second part of your question, I just, I think there's a lot of neat products out there, quite honestly, that helps you manage load. And, and when you have such a large load user like a data center, I mean, you know, Representative, I think we spoke about this when we met briefly, or I think it might have been after the Energy Committee meeting, but the Susquehanna, the Amazon facility going up at, at the Susquehanna Power Generation Station, that filing at FERC is for, I believe, 460, 480 megawatts to come offline there. The city of Pittsburgh's 300 megawatts, so that's larger load than the city of Pittsburgh, to put it in perspective. So while that's a challenge, it's also an opportunity. Think about bringing the load down of an entire city, because that's really what we're talking about. So the same challenge that we have in meeting that demand, the same advantage we have in managing load, particularly at peak demands, because we cannot build out for peak demands. It would, no one would be able to afford an electric bill if we built generation and transmission to meet peaks. So the way you meet peaks is through demand responses, and you know, Andy had a good point, you know, and that's something we are looking at at the commission, particularly as we're having this data center proliferation come into the state, is, is demand response is the way to address peaks. Otherwise, it's going to be very costly for every ratepayer. I hope that answered your question, Representative.
It does, thank you.
Representative Nelson?
It, it still raises the question, I guess, I apologize, to follow on to that for the data centers. How does that help if we have more and more large users that are realistically behind the meter, right? So if, if they're not actually putting generation out for access for the rest of us on the grid, if they're realistically taking all of this power generation kind of off the grid and using it directly for their business, when, when do you anticipate in a moment of need that we can then have that conversation to say, can you turn that back over to the rest of us? And is, what structures do you envision that are in place where if they're powering a data center for, realistically, for global commercial activity, how are we going to be able to say it's in the best interest of the community 10 miles down the road that you, that you turn down some of your usage so that we can run our air conditioners? That's almost against nat, we'll probably run against national security concerns if we think that there's the notion that our data centers can be a repository, a battery of generation for community.
Representative, very, very good question, various two questions. So first off, I'm talking about in front-of-the-meter installations. Behind-the-meter installations, we're not touching, that's a direct contractual relationship with the generator, okay? So you are correct. However, most data centers, if you ask most data centers, they want to be in front of the meter, because it's more reliable being in front of the meter than behind the meter. If they're behind the meter, they're putting all their eggs in one basket, and if something happens to that generator, they're on an island. Any data center is going to be, want to be in front of the meter for reliability purposes. So that's how we address it. When we look at the Amazon deal, they recently announced a week or two ago that that deal's moving in front of the meter. So I, you know, we did our en banc hearing to try to incentivize being in front of the meter. I've testified before, the more data centers we have in front of the meter, the more we benefit all ratepayers across the grid. benefit all ratepayers across the grid. So I was referring to data centers in front of the meter. You're absolutely correct. The data center behind the meter, we're not touching, and that's not going to have any impact, and you're correct. That's taking power directly off of the grid and feeding that data center directly. The answer to your second part of the question, how can we power down? Couple different ways. You know, when we had our hearing, I believe Google testified that, say, we have six data centers, they're all interconnected. At times of peak demand, at times like today when we have, you know, intense stress on our grid, we can scale one down and operate five data centers instead of six. Now, when you do your Google search, it might take you six seconds to get the result instead of .2 seconds. But if you like air conditioning, you'll wait six seconds for your, you know, Google response, and that's simply the way it works. Another way of doing it is there's software out there that goes to the data center, the data center would be the client, and it optimizes tasks of the data center. So instead of bringing a full data center down, it looks at all the tasks that data center's doing, and any connected data center to it, and optimizes those tasks. Optimization programs, I think, are a way to go, whether it's at the data center task level, you know, CVR, that is conservation voltage reduction, that's optimization or efficiencies at the local grid level. Those are the ways, I think, we answer this increased demand and help manage the grid during those stressful times.
I appreciate that. Again, the one question I still have around that, though, is, have you seen examples where that local interest has been baked into, whether it's a community benefit agreement or something else, because you're still impacting international or global trade? If you're talking about impacting the speed of a Google result, I mean, and I know that's just, you know, a one random example, right? These data centers are not there for local utility. The data centers are there for global trade. How do you anticipate having the leverage, if you will, to say, I need you guys to power down a little bit so that we can have electricity for the neighborhood?
Again, that would only be if it's in front of the meter where they're connected to the local district.
In front of the meter, even, yes, even in front of the meter, how do you anticipate? You know, it feels like what I'm hearing is the conversation that you have saying, I need you guys to be a good neighbor so that we don't have rolling brownouts in other portions of them.
That would be in an interconnection agreement. So these entities are going to sign interconnection agreements with the local EDC, and that language would be in an interconnection agreement. That's, again, something we're looking at in our en banc. Can I cite an example? No, because we don't have the data center proliferation built yet. They don't exist.
Yeah, if I could add to this discussion as well, there's, there are demand response programs, but there are also emergency procedures, emergency interruption procedures as well, and there's levels of that that can be called. And so one of the things that IACPA encourages the commission to look at is to ensure that data centers are appropriately placed within that call structure of emergency interruption. So the Public Service Commission does have tools available to them to mandatory call for the reduction of load whenever the grid is reaching a point of criticality to avoid those brownouts and blackouts as well. So it is another tool beyond just these demand response programs, these emergency programs that are available to manage that load.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you to all the testifiers. Representative Steele, you got a question real quick?
A super quick comment. The bottom line in all of these conversations that we have around these issues is that we need more generation, and we need it fast. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Steele. I would also like to note that the committee received written remarks from the Pennsylvania Petroleum Association, the Pennsylvania Propane Gas Association, and SERIS. Chair Metzger, do you have any comments? Thank you to all the testifiers. This great debate continues, but I always like to remind people that we need to keep our ratepayers at the forefront of all of this as we continue to make Pennsylvania the leader in this AI space and these data centers. We can never forget about Pennsylvanians. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.